Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Really that tough?
Yeah.
Hey, Bob. Good to see you all here. I'm actually extremely excited to have you all here. Can we start with the pledge and I'll tell you what the white seats are for, please. The flag of the United States of America is a republic with its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and law. I decided last minute to do a quick change, okay? One thing is you're not going to get my typical PowerPoint tonight. I know a lot of people are going to be disappointed with it, but I'm... Well, with board meeting coming right behind this, it gets a little touchy sometimes to preempt what I'm sharing with the board and I thought, all right, how do I separate this? So, we're going to do something a little different. All right, I'm about to pass out and since there were so many people, I thought I'd do a straw poll. There's nothing scientific about it, don't call me later and say, "What the heck did you do?", okay? I'm going to show you why I'm about to pass out. These are my only two copies, but the new yacht club, they've actually came back to me last week and wanted colors, the final colors for the outside of the building because the pump house is going up. We're going to match the... We want to make sure when that goes up, that it matches the new yacht club so it all looks like it's supposed to be there. I haven't figured out 100% how I'm going to do that yet since I just got this information. The back wall, I reeled in the actual materials. They actually cut the brick and the block and the siding for three of these. So, what I passed out to you were just a little piece of paper. Now, when you look in these, the first page that you'll see is the green that went out in the referendum material and then the back of the building in the green. Second one's a blue roof, back of it was a blue roof. Okay? Third one's red with tan siding and you'll get the back view. And then when you get the last two or three of them, they changed the roof to gray with a blue. Okay? So, all I want you to do is put your top two choices in order, okay, on your slip of paper, just as meetings going on. Your pads start here and just kind of follow it around. So, as we're going through the meeting, just take time and look at it. It's a straw poll. I've asked 32 people since I've gotten this this week and I've got 32 answers. As you can imagine, but they're not as all different as you might imagine. And then when I was coming over, I saw so many people, I thought, wow, this is a great way to get another snapshot because we just don't have the opportunity to get all these people together so frequently. So, you guys might... If you don't want to participate, just don't throw anything out. But if you don't mind, just do it. Your name doesn't have to be on it. I just thought while you're here, I might as well get some input from you. Is that okay? Everybody understand what we're doing? And at the end, we're throwing the meeting, if you want to get up and look at the materials, again, we've got the red room. And the red on the board back there is a little bit different than the red that was in here. That's why I asked for the actual materials because sometimes print doesn't match exactly to what your materials are. So, three different... There's eight colors in there. If they're not one of the three, it's okay. Just tell me which one it is. I like the blue siding with gray roof. Or I like the red roof with the tan side. Okay? Everybody good with that? Thank you because that's a huge help. Okay. Some things I want to talk to you about tonight. Okay, we had just sort of... I noticed we had a golf event today and I see several folks that were there, but it's a pretty cool event for the community. I thought I'd share it with you because we always did good news links around golf. With the golf course being completed, we hit the May 1st opening date and that was great. We've had a lot of outside play. If you recall, last year in May, we were closed for the month of May because we're still under renovation. Well, we had the opportunity. May was open this year, so we had the outside package play that's been participating along with our membership. We kicked off today with our meeting with Mr. Billy Casper. Mr. Billy Casper, one of the most... He's got the most career points in the Ryder Cup. Now, if you ask me what all this means, I can't tell you I'm not golfer, but there's three or four in the room that can answer it. But he is a Masters champion, most points in the Ryder Cup, most PGA Tour wins, and his accolades are huge. Well, he was here today. Phenomenal event. We had a golf event with 120 golfers. He did a Q&amp;A in the morning for the lifetime members with a small breakfast event, followed up by the golf outing itself, and then came back for lunch and he sat up for about an hour and a half and just was onstage talking. The man is phenomenal. I think Sharon, you're shaking your head. What would you take with Mr. Casper? Sharon, your board member.
I am a non-golfer and I hadn't met Mr. Casper before, but if I were to put a title to him, it would be the darling llama of golf. You're an amazing man. He looks at you and looks at you and just is communication. He is a winner, but he is more importantly, a person inside that shots. Phenomenal. It was a pleasure to meet him. It really was. So, he was truly genuine. He gave a lot of tips to people on golf techniques and putting techniques. So, we were just thrilled and I think everybody at the golf course today was ecstatic with the whole event.
Yeah, it was a great event for the community. It got us back on the map. The accolades we're getting from... We had a lot of folks that aren't OPA members that were came out to golfing events and just raving about the current conditions of the course. That's a huge for us, folks. We've been through almost two years of a lot of scrutiny, a lot of headache, a lot of it can, it shouldn't, it wouldn't. Well, guess what? The product is now there. Our membership numbers should start to grow from here. Events like this will certainly help that. Talking to a gentleman who had been here four years ago, who swore he would never come back, came back and signed up as a member and he's looking to potentially become a lifetime member. Just interesting when the product's right and the team is like running it, I mean Casper with John and Russ again here, we've just got a really different option now and I believe it's going to net the benefits. It took a lot to get there, but now that we're there, I think the community's really going to feel so we're off to a great start with golf. I give you some quick updates because I know a lot of people... And please understand the format tonight. I'm going to run through my list and then as always with the town hall meetings, they're yours, so I'll just open up any questions. I'm going to give you some quick just dates. A lot of questions I've had were on the yacht club, the pool, the marina, obviously, and I'm sure a lot of people are here to hear about that. I'll give... I'll do a written update and have it up on the board for Saturday's meeting, but I was trying to jot down today between the events, just kind of when things were submitted, when they were received, just people are... They're the frequent questions. Let's start with demolition of the pool building. The permit submitted on 3/18, approved on 3/27. This may or may not mean anything to a lot of you all, but I did... This was one of the main questions I got. The pool equipment building shell only, 3/18, it was submitted, approved on 4/11. Yacht Club building foundation submitted on 3/18, approved on 4/11. Yacht Club building submitted for the final plans, 5/9 comments, and then came back for comments, resubmitted 5/15. So, they came back with a couple additional questions. That will be resubmitted 5/28. Again, that doesn't slow us down. That's the building, that's where we should be in that process. The pool, this is the one that's drawn a lot of questions and controversy. The pool construction submitted 4/10, returned for comments 5/17. There were comments on the engineering reports and some other parts of that. They've been resubmitted and it's pending action. Once the state approves it, and it's Maryland Health Department, the county will have already looked at it. They're just waiting for state approval. Once they get that, they'll approve it the same day. Fuel tanks for the marina. I don't have submission dates. We've had a little bit of a challenge. Our contract, just so everyone's clear, is with Harkins Contracting. They're our primary contractor. They're subbing out the work for the pool, in this case, it's Parish Pools, and then with the marina with a subcontractor that does marinas. We've had some difficulty getting dates, submissions and those type of things. I'll be able to talk more with more accuracy by tomorrow, so I don't want to give you too much, but we just struggled with the way the permitting process with the subcontractor on the marina has been. I have everything documented. We went through, had three meetings yesterday, include onsite, in my office and conference call. I'll be able to update everyone certainly by Saturday, exactly where we stand. It would appear as of today, late today, we're going to have fuel by the first week of June. Okay? I'll give a more detailed update on what's gotten us to that point certainly by Saturday's meeting. I'm waiting for a couple pieces of updated information. Anyone that's gone through the construction process, whether it's been on your home, if you've dealt with... My background with some of the military, constructional base, housing, those type of things, nothing ever goes 100% the way you hope it is. Even the best plan, when you're dealing with third parties or outside agencies, you're really at their... You've got to follow their process. You can't expedite that. I will tell you, Worcester County has been very good work with. We have not had issues. I've had people call, "Well, the county's slowing us down." That is actually great to work with. I tell you, the person down here in particular, Jennifer Burke, has kept me updated with weekly updates on what our contractors have been submitting to them and every week she created a great spreadsheet. She'd send me an update on where we are. Again, not... It's not anyone in Ocean Pines Association job to run the project. That's why we hired Harkins, but they kept us updated so I knew where a lot of these dates were. So, we'll be able to get much more detail on Saturday with the marina side of it. The pool, it looks like will be... Again, don't shoot the messenger, but it looks like it's going to be July 4th weekend is when we'll do the opening on the pool at the yacht club. I wish it could take something better than that, but it just takes time. We still don't have the final stamp on the state. What's interesting about state approval, which we thought we could expedite that process a little bit, existing pools, same spot, same pretty much everything, the only difference we changed was the depth of the pool. In fact, it was damaged with Hurricane Sandy. That combination, we were under the impression, including the pool contractor, that they would... We would have a more favorable quicker... We weren't changing anything. They thought it could get done quicker. Part of the challenge this time of year, everyone's made to get their pools open, so it just... State, you know, we're trying to work with state through that process. We're kind of there. We've got to wait for their approval before we take the next step. Okay? So, there are the updates on that. For those who don't know, we had a... The Beach Club pool had a... We had... We filled the pool... This time of year, we're filling all our pools. We're getting them ready for Memorial Day weekend. We filled the pool two weeks and a couple days ago and when we filled them, came back the next day and the level was lower than when we had filled it. Checked all the fittings, our public works team, our pool guys, checked everything, topped it back off, came back the next day, it was low again. So, we had to go... Did a full check. We had to hire an outside company to come in and take a look, which we couldn't find what the issue was. Ended up having to scope the pipes with a mini camera, where it actually goes into the pipes under the pool. Well, the pipes under the pool are cracked and they're the main feed pipes and they're not holding the water. There's a lot of reasons and I've got pictures and fully documented, but obviously with the two-week turnaround time, we're scratching my head going, "Great, now I'm going to have two pools down for Memorial Day. This is going to be a serious beating on this one." Well, working with Parish Pools, who's our contractor to do our yacht club pool, actually came in, they took a look at it. Not only were they able to make immediate repairs, but the pool has been full this week. It looks to be a fully ready go for the weekend. So, we were able to work with them, very pleased with their work, very pleased with follow-up information. And again, I'll give a lot more detail Saturday on everything that got us to that point. All right, beach club repairs. Okay, a couple other things that I want to make sure I talk about before I start going through the few questions I had, then I open up to you all. Lately, we're turning a little bit, in my opinion, and folks can say yes or no or indifferent, but there's been a lot of negativity out there about what we're not doing right, what's not happening and that I'm too positive or too optimistic about things. Okay? And I know some folks here are smiling, shaking their head. I'm going to tell you, that's who I am. I'm not shaking who I am because some community members want to be negative. It's just not who I am, folks. I'm going to be positive, I'm going to be focused, I'm going to keep my head down and get the work accomplished. If nothing else, the golf course is going to show you that. If you don't believe in the amount of negative energy that's been around something, take a look at the last 18, 24 months with golf and then take a look at where we are this month. It's fantastic. When we pull together and we keep working, we get through these bumpy times and at the end, we've got something really special. So, I just want to make sure I point that out. The other thing, why I try and I know it's been a little on edge lately with some things, so I got three major projects underway, but you think about our community, why things I can stay so positive. I walked, came over, I'm low powered from today's man, I moved my daughter back from college last night, which was fantastic, so I'm already excited about that, but I'm like, "Ah, we won't have many people." And then I come in the room and you're all here. This is why I'm so positive about the community, the participation, the things we do, the things this community represents, is much bigger than any one project or any speed bump along the way. It's just not who we are. I looked at the Veterans Memorial and where they got the Governor's Award for the memorial last year. Fantastic. I looked at the 52 social and civic organizations that this community has and all they do, that they donate, helping one another in the community. So, people ask, "Well, what about positive or you're too positive?" Folks, I'm excited to be here. This is a wonderful community and I'm not going to be dragged down in it with some of you that just want to think everything's negative because it's not. This is a great place to live. This really is in my mind and I wouldn't be raising my kids here, but I do believe this is not the premier community in the area. It is. So, a couple of things I want to point out. Largest community in the county, yet we have lowest crime rate. Says a lot, not only with our police force, but the community, the people in this room. It's low because of the people, you and your neighbors. Something we all can be happy about. Recycling. We've never done recycling before. We were number nine in the nation in our size with our recycling channel. We do things right, folks. It just sometimes takes time and sometimes takes the bumps as you go down the road to get there, but we're going to stay focused on it. Couple other things. Lately, as you said, we're being very secretive with things with so many people. I'm going to throw a couple things out, but then afterwards I'm going to ask you a question. We do town hall meetings. We do regular town hall meetings where I come and meet with you. I work for you guys. So, I come out and I do these meetings not because I'm looking forward to the meeting. 99% of the time when we walk away, we've all accomplished something. I'm smarter for it. I've heard from you and we can adapt and make the changes needed to keep the community moving forward. Streaming. We've streamed all of our meetings. We're streaming this meeting. When I say streaming, it's on channel 78 and it's on the website. How can you be more open? We're putting it out there. We want people to participate. We encourage you to participate. In fact, you all here tonight shows that we're doing at least an okay job with this. We've increased the articles in the newsletters. I try to write two, one about some facts are going on and one about a particular project. It takes time to do it, but I think it's important to communicate. We're up to about 5,000 people now that participate in our eBlast. If you're not participating, it's where you just put your email, you sign up for your email and if you send out eBlasts about information going on in the community, you get it. We have 5,000 people that now receive that. What, Teresa, 2,000 last year? We're up to 5,000 this year. So, if that's not communication, I don't know what is. So, what I ask you, don't tell us we're not communicating and not try to bring us a solution. What else should we be doing or could we be doing based on what you're seeing? How can we communicate better with you? We're here working for you. All you have to do is tell us, send us the suggestion. A lot of things we're doing now are because I've heard from you all that said, "Hey, let's try this" or "Can we do that?" We don't pretend to know all the answers, but certainly amongst the group, we'll come up with the best answers. Okay. Some things, just some quick updates for you. Membership benefits that often go... That just go unnoticed, but I want to make sure, especially with the B group, this is great. Things that you can participate in as an association member that we work hard to try to make sure we have. I don't know, but jolly riders and amusement, the peer amusement rides, we offer discount tickets here. So, as an association member and those who, "Well, I don't ride the rides." Yeah, your grandchildren might or your kids might. You can buy that at discount. We negotiate with these folks locally to get discounts. You're all, you know, come to the community center and get them. We have, in addition to that, the Regal movie tickets. We started doing those last year and they're like three bucks off the cover of a movie ticket. We get people coming and buying 10, 20, you know, a book of 10 or 20 at a time and they're back next month buying more. It's great to have that much time to watch movies, but if it's $3 savings per head, that's a pretty good savings for our membership. So, please take it... I don't know that everyone knows about that. We put it in the newsletter, but if you don't read it all, you'll miss it. The other things we do, we have discounts on West OC Fitness, Sam's Club and BJ memberships. We've negotiated with each of them that if you're an OPA association member, you have a discounted membership. I have to fill out the application and know a lot of people are using them. Come in, get your application form, so you can get discount. Okay? So, these are just some membership benefits that a lot of people don't know. Waste management. We've had some concerns. I've been meeting with waste management a couple times lately. One thing, am I going too fast for anybody? Am I okay? I'm trying to move quick and I can get to your questions because that's why most of you are here. Waste management, we've had some back and forth talks about their numbers from the amount collections they've had isn't what they expected them to be. One of the things that they found that they're seeing more of and they've had their local manager kind of go out, they track the trucks, see how the guy's moving quick enough, where they're doing with the poundage, so they do a whole lot of metrics. One thing that seems to come up on multiple occasions is buddy sharing, where you and your neighbor are splitting the cost and putting both of them in front of one. Well, the challenge with that is that actually hurts the entire community because part of the negotiated contract is based on the number of households keeps everyone's rate down. If the rate... If what happens, if we're pairing up, you know, you and I are neighbors and we're sharing the cost, it's coming into their side of it and guess what? That's going to make all of us have to pay more when that contractor negotiates. So, I'm just putting it out there that if that's occurring, please don't do it. It's a breach of contract for us and quite frankly, it's going to be... Ultimately, it hurts us because if they either increase their rates or cancel the contract, we go back out to bid. So, this is kind of a community service update. So, please, if it's happening, if you know it's happening, if you're doing it, please stop. Okay? If you know your neighbor's doing it, please encourage them not to do it. Board elections, for those that may not be aware, we have board elections coming up. Three spots, positions coming up. We have six candidates running. 24 June, okay, will be the candidates forum where the Q&amp;A is with all the candidates. So, 24 June, 7:00 PM here. Okay, I encourage you to... If you're not running for the board, but it's your community, come see what they say. The forum usually is not fun. You get a lot of good... I say fun unless you're sitting up there, but it's good because you really get to get some good input back and forth. So, please come out and participate. That's how the system's going to work is if you come out and participate in. So, that's June 24th. The ballots are going to be mailed out July 12th. August 8th is the deadline for the receipt of the ballots and then that Saturday, the 10th, they'll give you the count. What happens, they come in the 8th, they're counting on the 9th and the 10th, their annual meeting, they'll announce the winners. Okay? This month's newsletter that went out also has what I just gave you in the current newsletter. All those dates are actually third or fourth page in. Okay? But I thought I had you, might as well take that opportunity to share it with you. Okay? The other thing is with the annual membership meeting on the 10th, please bring a picture ID, ID, your driver's license with you. We went away from the yellow cards that didn't have your picture on, but they had your section and lot number. We went to the card with your picture with the magnetic strip on the back. I'm not sure we're going to have the ability to scan those this year where we can just walk in, scan and come into the meeting. You know, I think they sure we're trying to get there, but just give me a heads up. Not sure we're going to be able to get to that. If we don't, all you have to do is have your picture ID. Bring your license, so check in at the door like we've done for years. But last year, some folks got frustrated because they didn't have the yellow... They say we took their yellow card. We're upgrading. We have much better cards. They're going to be in Reed. We're phasing them in. You know, the things we can do, swiping into pools is an example. We're hoping to have swiping with the micro system soon for the food and beverage operations. So, that's where the cards are ultimately going. But just as a reminder, for your annual, for the annual meeting on the 10th, just bring picture ID. Okay? I'm trying to get as much heads up on it so no one gets surprised by it. All right. Now, I've got some questions that were recently asked. I'm going to answer these and then the floor is going to be yours. How we doing? Everybody looking at the colors and prints? Good? Okay. Section three, I'm just going to answer some of the emails. Like an update on section three, particularly the flooding Pinehurst Beacon area, Sandy Brook area. Things that we've done. Meetings with the county for almost 18 months where they made the improvement in each and road. That may be splash, it hit the papers. I didn't say splash with water and flooding, it's not a good match, but hit the papers. You know, that was one step and I believe a multi-step process to making the drainage improvements. Mr. Claggett came in last month at the board meeting and gave a real detail. Here are the ditches, here are some things with some pictures and there were a number of people that were here with him and supported that. We went down, took a look and great deal. I actually walked, I walked all the ditches with Eddie, the head of our public works. The areas that he identified that he felt needed to be cleaned out, we just cleaned out that whole, the way the whole ditch flows in that area, completely cleaned it out. This week, and you may have already seen some of them going on, we ordered the black, the plastic flares that go on the end of some of the pipes. There's a lot of water that drains out that way and they get caught on, you know, with the debris and everything. And because that section's so low, the way it flows, it tends to get more clogged than some of the others. So, we're everywhere they identified, we went back and checked off. We ordered and we're putting all the flares on this week. So, hopefully by this weekend, if not by tomorrow, all the black flares on the ends of the pipes that they recommended would be on there. So, everything they recommended...
Where are those locations?
I didn't, I don't have that with me. It was all last month's board meeting and if you want to either come into the office tomorrow and show you what they had recommended, or you can go out and walk that section, you can see where the main pipe that goes out to Beach Road, as you backtrack on that, everywhere there was pretty much a pipe that fed out to the Beach Road thing, we ordered the black pipe.
Okay, that's a good answer.
How about the other end of Pinehurst, where I'm at, like 51? It's like five thousand down. Every time I get a severe rain, I'm under two foot of water. I mean, you can't have a pipe with 20 foot inches half covered with dirt.
Well, again, we went...
And nobody walked down there. I mean, I get all the water off Ocean Parkway in my property. I mean, I might have done up on the intersection, but not down where I'm at. And that's where the problem's at. It's not flowing through there.
Well, I got you. We're... As these things are, as these areas are identifying, folks are coming in, we're addressing them. It's just like what Mr. Claggett gave you, very detailed. Here's where we think the issues are. We went out, we took a look, we're trying to make those improvements. They can snap me, snap me some pictures, give me the information, I'll come out and look with Eddie, we'll look at it. We're trying to do everything we can. The thing that we have to understand, and this, I'm not being smart, we do it all.
Yeah, I mean, the water's still laying in there.
Right. I get the calls about it. Here's what I can tell you. This year, we have a higher percentage of rain than we have the last couple of years. I mean, it's just, it's wetter. It's, it's going back to, it's a more normal rainfall for our area. Last couple of years, it's just a little drier if you look at what the regular averages are. We do have low lying areas. We have some folks that are pretty much in a basin or I say a valley based on where their neighborhood sits. The system was designed, for those who don't know, when it was originally signed, two inches of rain in 24 hours. Everybody lives here knows we get two inches of rain in an hour sometimes when we get the heavy nor'easter that blows through. So two inches, after that, it's not supposed to, it doesn't clear all the water. We're trying to work through it, piece by piece. I can't tell you it's going to be fixed overnight. I can tell you we're taking a real serious look at it. I recognize the challenges, particularly in section three, but there are other parts of Ocean Pines that have similar challenges. We're documenting them. We're trying to get pipes replaced. We're trying to do flares. This first time, we've actually aggressively gone after the flares. We're trying to do everything we can to make those improvements. Last thing I want anybody doing, sitting in water. I mean, I just, it hurts all of us.
For three days, I got water around my house, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, and that's why we take this serious.
And I got a ditch come alongside of my house, it overflows because the water ain't running out.
All right, again, shoot me the information, we'll take a look. We're real serious about trying to make the fix. Now, it's not going to be fixed overnight. Anybody that's been here any period of time knows this is a long-term, been a long-term issue. So we're chipping away at it. Oh, this one's about the permits and the dates, I gave you those.
Before you go on.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's a lot more things that we need to discuss about this problem. At one point, I think you said that you were contacting an engineering firm. Could you update us on that? Because, you know, I live in this neighborhood also. Not everyone is 100% behind Mr. Claggett's ideas. So we'd like to hear your ideas. I like your idea. And we'd like to hear what you're saying.
Okay. The question or statement that came up, okay? Is that, that, okay, again, so please, think about this. He brought us some solutions, okay? They may not be everyone's solution, but we're willing to listen to anybody and find ways to make improvements. The solutions that he had identified were relatively simple solutions that our team could jump on and try to fix to make some improvements. I agree, it's not, I don't think it's going to be a permanent solution. I said I didn't think a beach and road improvement was going to be the final solution. Okay? There are other people that feel otherwise, that know that is the solution, it's the way it is. I don't. So what I talked about last month was talking with some other engineering firms to look at what they might recommend as possibilities to redo a drainage study for the community starting in the worst hit areas to find out if there are either new ways or other ways we should be looking at. We're putting together some options and then I'll have to, because it's not going to be cheap to do that type of study, I'll have to take it to the board and the board will have to make a decision if they would like to move forward with that or not.
And what kind of timeframe are you talking about?
It's going to be the next couple of months. I mean, I'd like to say quicker, it just takes time.
Oh, that's great. Couple months is what you're thinking.
Well, for us, get the information to present to the board, for the board to decide if we want to take action on it. Okay, okay. Yes?
Jack Collins, thank you for the update. Very, very good, thank you. Just a, just a couple of questions because I'm not clear in my mind. You were talking about the permit process.
Okay, okay, I heard the first one. Let's get the mic. Okay. I'd like to please, thank you.
I could talk this way, I mean.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Use the microphone.
Okay. You were talking about the permit process as far as the gas tanks are concerned. Are they, are they state process? Is that states?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're, that has not been issued yet. The permit has not been issued yet.
The stamp for the, for the tanks has not been issued yet.
Well, I'm wondering if Delegate McDermott or Senator Mathias might be able to help us out a little bit there and speed things along. You know, dealing with the state often is a morass and, you know, the more, the more help you can get from local authority, people that we vote for, you know, the better off we are. On the, on the pool, my question simply is, your July 4th date is pending based on a permit being issued on a timely basis. So it could slip beyond July 4th.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're hoping to be in this weekend, so. The rest, okay, the other set of questions around the time I as well, so. All right. It's yours. All right, I'll work my way back here and then back this way. I'll work in that order.
Can you refresh our memory? When did we vote to do the yacht club project and the pool project? Wasn't that last?
No. When did we read the results?
It was last fall.
Yeah, I thought it was. I thought it was. So there's a whole flurry of activity in March and April regarding permits. You went through a whole litany of, you know, when it was submitted and they were all March and April dates.
Yes.
There's a six-month gap in there.
Okay.
I'm only a part-time resident, but I'm shocked when I come down here and see the lack of progress. He did, you were a great salesman. He did a fantastic job of selling the thing.
Okay.
But, but I can't say that, I'd like to know what happened in that gap. What was going on during the implementation? I think we voted for it six months ago.
Okay. The gap that occurred, let's make sure, let me explain where we are. I'm just, you're next, let me answer this question. Where we are with it is, one, I'm not running the contracts, or running the project, contrary to what some folks think, okay? What we did was enter into a full contract with Harkins Contracting. We started in the fall, and I'm sorry I'll have the date right in front of me. Again, that's why I pulled my sheet, which is kind of a run-through. In the fall, it was approved, or we got the referendum results. We went through AWB Engineering. They're the engineering company that works with Harkins. Our first step was to get the engineering plans, specs, mechanicals, all those things so we could start that part of the process. We entered into agreement through Harkins with them to do that. Several months passed while they're working through that process, we're working with Harkins to finalize the materials, they're working with, example, Sambi Oder and stuff for the roofing, you know, we have a lot of different pieces there, the final grade of materials. All those things went into, just because we approved it, we didn't approve the contract, we approved yes to move forward to create the contract. So all those things were being put together to say, here's the final actual components or all the spec sheets for all the components that went into it, that went into the final contract. And then from there, contract was executed and that's why I can give you the definitive dates that I had last month. I'm going to update that. Actually, the board asked me to put it on that Gantt chart we started with, and I had that. And then from there, we've been going through the final tour there, worked through. There were seven or eight permits that were drawn in pieces with the county. Most of those went without any issue and then up to where we are would stay normal above it. I know it seems cloudy, it's a big project, three phases. We've got the, I wouldn't say three, we technically have three projects in one right now. And don't forget, the pool was not initially part of the project, that had to be added to the project, which also added some complexity there. Off the top of my head, that's what it is. I'll get more detail, but I'll have the Gantt chart updated by Saturday. And again, when I update those, they're on the website after then, so you can track it with us. Mr. Clark was next, now come back up to his side.
Hi, I'm Ray Clark, 855 Ocean Parkway. I'm speaking as just another member, not a board member. I'm sorry. But I do appreciate your enthusiasm. But there's a difference between optimistic and realistic.
Mr. Clark, can I ask you something? You're going to be speaking Saturday.
No, I'm going to finish speaking for myself right now, if you don't mind. If I get rude, I'm professional, I'm sure you'll correct me.
No, you're good.
I always try to lean to the latter, the realistic. I have a question in this statement. The question is, do you really think that Harkins and Parrish can finish the new yacht club pool deck, mechanical room, railings, bulkhead, and have an occupancy permit in 31 working days? That's what it is, 31 working.
I told you at the latest update last.
I want to be on record for this room and the press is telling you with 40 years in the construction business, that isn't even close to realistic and it ain't optimistic either. Thank you.
All right, we're coming up to this side.
My understanding was we're having a problem determining how many parking spaces that we need for the yacht club. The project is being held up because of insufficient parking space to park cars for the occupancy that you projected that the yacht club could use. So what's happened to the parking spaces? Have we resolved that issue?
Oh, yeah, we resolved that back in December.
November, December.
Yeah, we had, we've already resolved that, yes, sir. And just for those that don't know, that's a good point. The way the yacht club, the two pools and the marina, okay? And again, when you start going through the process, things pop up. We were, we were adequate with what we had at the time. We go to rebuild and we're building to the 2012 codes. They added, obviously things have changed in the last 40 years. So when they went through that process, they said, whoa, wait a minute, I have to meet the current codes for the parking requirements. Well, current codes are far more stringent than they were 40 years ago and less than that when the, when the Mufferd Pool was put in. But a lot of time has passed since those original projects were completed and the rules have changed. So we had to go through a pretty detailed process to identify the parking and make, and come up with a parking strategy to accomplish the new pool, the marina, and the yacht club building. At that point, it was existing pool, but that's also went into our thought process, going back with the same pool kept us in compliance with what we had to work through with the parking spaces. So great question. And it was something that we had to work through. It came up as a surprise. I mean, we figured with the grandfather, we could use the same, but as I got into it because of the changes, they said, no, we want you to meet the current code. So we had to go through that. Yes, ma'am. Here.
Am I being specific with section three flood zone?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Indeed. I take it from what you're saying that you don't entirely agree that the Bochamp Road outlet was a solution, the entire solution for our problem in section three, is that correct?
I, I said it all along, ma'am, I did not think that it was a total solution.
Do you believe that by putting in another outlet for a lot of this water to go to, just too much water going into one ditch ending up on Bochamp Road? All these houses in section three and all this flooding, all that water going in one place, it's just not enough, you know, to accommodate. Is there another place in section three that some of this water can be diverted to?
Okay. I'm a qualified, say I'm not an engineer, and I've been reminded of that multiple times.
I'm not either.
So, and that's why I'm recommending we do a formal, update the engineering study to find out if that would be a good option. I will tell you, since you asked me personally, I am not an engineer. Have I got that? I'm not an engineer. I do believe trying to find discharges out of the community is important. I think that is something that we really need to look at that is an improvement, but I've said that for two years. Now, I'm not an engineer, so I can't qualify it. I'll get the engineer, that's why I'm saying we should get the engineering studies accomplished by qualified engineers that can give us that yes or no. But there's a lot of water, small section, one pipe. Yes, ma'am.
I too live in section three. I know, I'm Beacon Hill Road. I am an engineer, a domestic engineer, okay? When I have a problem with the water flow in my house, I get some elbow grease and I get drained out. To me, there is a problem with clogged ditches. The, I mean, they just need to be cleaned. They need to be cleaned annually. And I think if this is done by Ocean Pines, that, you know, the water will flow and it won't back up. I mean, it, it doesn't take money to spend on engineers, it's a common sense thing. The water's not flowing. Drive around there and look at the ditches, look at the stuff underneath the driveway. Several years ago, I watched Ocean Pines staff clean out the pipe under my driveway. They blew it out. And that was one of my questions. Where is that piece of equipment and why haven't I seen it in the last eight years?
The piece of equipment you're referring to, okay, is owned by the county. We work very closely with the county. We call them, they come in and they blow it out. There's two schedules they follow. There's an emergency work order that goes in, okay, and that's if we have severe flooding back up your house and your pipes clogged and we can pretty much validate it by going to check. They'll come in, they'll reprioritize and send the truck and they'll blow it out. Doesn't take long when they're there with it. The other is for regular maintenance, that's a longer schedule and we have several and they've been in meetings several times this spring blowing pipes out. Matter of fact, we had someone, there were pipes being blown out, I want to tell you it was in South End, but it may have been North, but I think it was South End, and they had a number of them that needed to get done. Two others were identified that they had to come back and do, but they were already backed up on schedule and they had to reschedule to come back and do it, which they had. So it's just, it's a piece of equipment we do not have. The minimum cost, we looked into it last year, the minimum cost, and it's not for the truck like the county has, for a pool behind trailer is about 70,000. A truck unit would be much more expensive. So we have looked at it and, so that's, that's.
Maybe we need to do more than look at it because that seems to be the solution instead of hiring a bunch of consultants to, you know, scratch their heads and we pay them all this money and, you know, it's not fixed. You say to come to you and we keep coming to you about section three. I mean, the mailboxes, it's pathetic. On Beacon Hill Road, there's nothing but water. I have driven around and I see some of the mailboxes have covers, a lot of them have cement and pads, and I'm working with someone here at Ocean Pines on the Beacon Hill mailboxes, but, you know, it's, I get just real discouraged, just real discouraged.
Okay, we, I'll tell you personally, I recognize, I'm discouraged at the time.
I mean, living in the water is terrible.
Oh, no, no, listen, I got it. I'm discouraged through that time for 20 years, but what's. Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Reynolds, if you'd like to speak, get the microphone, please. So what's going to happen, that we do actually follow and we clean them, we have to spike what folks. We have 140 miles of ditches that we cut, okay? Our folks are cleaning them, they track them. We're tracking very closely after every rainfall, especially in the worst areas. One of the things that we're doing is we're documenting more so than we ever have. And I'll tell you, I sat in meetings leading up to when the county changed that Beach and Road issue, month to month to month, they told, no, we can't do anything. Finally, you know, after saying that's not acceptable, Mr. Buddy found, agreed and helped us get the money to do it. Now, this has been tried for 10 years. I mean, there were three solutions, a $1 million, 1.2 million, and a $4.5 million drainage solution that was documented, and that's all in our files, that were proposed before and they wouldn't. So it's an issue that's been ongoing for our folks for more than two or three or four years. It's long-term. So I gotta tell you, I think of taking a pretty aggressive approach to it. You may not agree with me, but I document everything we're doing. We're very aggressive trying to address this. I can't tell you I have all the answers. We track it, we're tracking it better than we ever had, we're actively going after it. When we get solutions that seem simple, Mr. Claggett seemed relatively simple, and he wasn't the only one there that ended up presenting it, we addressed it. If that didn't even help somebody a little bit, that's what we'll do, we'll just keep chipping away until it gets figured out.
I think you're spending too much time tracking it. Something needs to be done. They just need to be closed. I think they need to be closed.
Okay, send me the information on the clogged one. I'll have someone else tomorrow to validate it. I can tell you, we're looking. Every time we get the report, they go out immediately and look at it. If it's clogged, we document, and we get it on list, blow it out. All right, the question was here and I'll come back around. Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions. So whose idea was it to drain the swimming pools?
It's a mix. We, and again, I've said this and this becomes a point of contention, okay? If it's above ground, above the water level, we're draining. The ones that have the pressure from the water, we have water left in them. It's part of our SOP, we haven't changed that. And I, the board's asked me to present this weekend under a given detail, pool by pool, exactly what's done with that in the same process we proceeded. We've changed some things, but the ones that are below when they have the water pressure, we kept watering them. The big, the big issue that came up recently, well, Hurricane Sandy, you drained it. Oh, and do we have pictures that was full? We topped it off the day before to overbuild. We typically, the ones that are below grade, we actually drop it below the stimmers, okay? And sometimes a little bit low and it helps balance out the pressure. Hurricane Sandy, we have pictures, so we topped it off. And I said that, but people are like, oh, no, you drained it. We documented, we have the records on the waters show that where we topped it off and we have pictures of it. So it's a mix.
All right, well, if you didn't drain it, that's fine. The second question, the second question I have, when I built my house in 77.
Yes, sir.
I looked at my lot and I looked at the drainage ditch and my lot was lower than the drainage ditch. So I had tubs all brought in and I raised the elevation. I drive around to the, I bike around to the lines lot, and I see a lot of houses that are, they made no attempt, like my next door neighbor, who his property completely fills, turns into a swimming pool, all around the house, next to the canal. And I wasn't here when they were building the house, so I mean, I was, wasn't full time, so I, I came down to the house, it's there, and I see it. Does that, when you're getting the permit to build a house in Ocean Pines, does elevation of your lot have a bearing?
It's all part of the county permit process. Part of our challenge, and you hit where a lot of the issues we had, hate to say it, we're built on swamp. We never, Ocean Pines would never be approved again the way we were built.
That's right.
Okay, just wouldn't, coastal bays, everything, I don't believe it will. With that being said, you're right, every home that gets built, there's dirt brought in, it changes the topography, which changes the water flow. The water flow was designed before we had 7700 homes built here. So every time one's built, it changes the flow, how, and it's up to the county to approve it. They were more lax 20 years ago than they are now in the amount of fill you can put in, what you can do with the ditches. So yeah, there's been a lot of changes, and you're right, there's some higher and some lower, and it does create a lot of challenges.
My second question is, the floor is separating from the concrete, isn't it?
Over here, yeah. Yeah, we've got bubbles, we've had for a year and a half. We've been tracking it, we've been documenting it. But we've also been in touch with the manufacturer, so if they come out, we change, we tried last year changing, when the humidity's highest, when it happens the worst, we tried, there's heating elements that actually flow under that, keep it balanced out. We've actually tried upping and lowering based on the recommendation from the manufacturer to figure out, and we thought we had, when we changed it last year, it seemed to balance out, and they still got popping up in more frequency, these bubbles. Manufacturers come back out to take a look at it. One of the things that they, and I'm getting the report that they want to do, is they want to do actually some sampling, where they actually pour out a section and they go down far enough into the concrete so they get the moisture content to find out if there's something else. It's a moisture issue, and we've tried several things to fix it, it's just not there yet, and we're working with the manufacturer. We checked the warranty, it's under warranty, so we're gonna keep going, going the other way.
Please, sir, hope.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm in Section 6 on Seafair Lane.
6, am I safe on 6?
Yes, you are. I am in Ocean Pines. Um, my heart goes out to anybody in Section 3. I don't have that problem. My problem is, while I was, my husband and I were gone, Ocean Pines came out, decided they were gonna dig down in my gully. Never in 17, six, almost 17 years have we ever had water that stayed in that gully more than two days, and it's never overflowed. And they have come out, Justin, and Prudential's super good about it, but why did they do it? They made a mess out of my gully, a big mess, the roots are all over the place, and now I have water that stays there for days and days.
Well.
I mean, I, I lived in Pennsylvania my whole life, and I know what water problems are.
Section 3 asked me to do that. That's what he said, not me.
But my friend here, there you go, and my neighbor, he and, and another neighbor who doesn't live in Ocean Pines, they really have a problem.
Prior to the dig or after the dig?
All the time. I'm here, it'll be 17 years in July. And Rhoda Knott, who lived in this, in the house, way back, she had the problem. I mean, I saw water that it came almost up to his house.
And your neighbors?
Right next to me. I'm high and dry, I'm high and dry.
And that's, I'm sure, again, this is where, and not everyone sees it, we're trying to be aggressive to address the drainage issue.
Well, the problem is, they need a bigger pipe, took a little pipe.
Uh, ma'am, that's part of the issue. We're trying to go through piece by piece and chip away where we have it. Yours is probably dug out because your neighbor's next to it, and it said.
Nobody, they did four houses, and, you know, we just shook our heads. Why would they dig up these gullies like this?
Well, maybe trying to make an improvement that's further down the line, because again, that's why I talked about doing a study. There are so many pieces that have been built. People put pipes in, bigger, smaller, all these things have occurred over time, the building a house, it's filled with dirt up, somewhere down. It's created some challenges with the water leaving the community.
What they did was, they dug down so far, then guess what? It's below the pipe, so the water stays there.
Again, we're, we're, did it give your neighbor aim relief?
No.
Isn't he at, well.
No, because it's around the corner.
I can't, I'm gonna tell you this, as much as I like the way the line is all drainage, it's not gonna get resolved, and it's been 20 plus years. I looked at, at, I think we have the files, reading through the files, these things, especially Section 3, have been addressed. I looked at town hall meetings from five, six, seven years ago, same issues. That's why we're trying to address it differently. We're trying to look at it from a different perspective and not just say, it is what it is, we have to live with that. We really are trying to chip away. I'm sorry it's not quick enough for you guys, but it wasn't created overnight, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, but we're gonna keep trying.
We just felt it was wasted manpower and equipment power, and they made a mess, and left it with a problem.
Again, that's why maybe an engineering study might be even better, so.
Yes, sir. Bob, you know me, because we had a number of talks on Eddie Bell in the 52 Seafair, right on the corner of Seafair and Seafair. And what Doris, my neighbor here, is saying, and we've had this discussion, what's happened is there is a 30 inch pipe going across Seafair where it makes the loop, and then when it goes under, my next door neighbor's not hurt, but the one on the other side, there's two 8 inch pipes. Now, you know, I've learned a lot, but I understand you can't put 5 pounds or 10 pounds of you-know-what in a 5 pound bag, and that's what they're trying to do. And I know that it's gonna be really hard for you all, because you're gonna have to dig up Seafair to get the larger pipes across there. And I know that creates all the problems with utilities and all that.
Well, let me, and not necessarily specific, I don't remember off the top of my head, we're looking at another one where we just got the county utility delineation in the area, same type of thing, bigger pipe on one side, just two smaller ones. Challenge is, either main pipe or other utilities are there, so the county elected to go with smaller piping so it wouldn't get into that main piping for sewer or whatever it is. That's why the changes get made. Again, these things happen, the more frequently that happens, the more stagnant spots you put. I didn't design it, I didn't intend to chip away to try to fix it, but when you go from that big to that small, typically because just pull flow it, there's a horse main, there's something else, and that's what we're finding, is we're going through a lot of these. It's that there are other utilities tied up under there that prevents you from putting, just digging it out, putting a 30 inch, so with flow, there's something in the path that prevents that from occurring, so therefore an alternative. One of the things we looked at that we ran into, Hingham Lane, we end up with that issue as well, some things weren't, but when they went back out and started getting into it, there were a couple, so they, some of the piping were the oblong piping, so we had the same size, but it just wasn't as deep in the ground. Again, solutions as you go along the way, so the more we find, the more we're trying to make the right solution. The easy one will have been, okay, just outside the piping go, but we're gonna start with the problems that a lot of our folks are having now, and we don't want to do it, we want long term, more permanent solution.
Sure, and.
Go ahead. If you wanna talk, Mr. Reynolds, you get the microphone and speak like everyone else, please.
Anyway, going back, you've worked with me, there's nothing I could say, you know?
We're trying.
We're trying, I understand that and everything, and I emailed a couple of questions in, but I didn't hear you address them. I don't know if they didn't get to you in time or what.
But ask me, because they'll try.
One of the questions was, I've been reading in the paper about this engineering study you're gonna have coming.
Right.
Okay, is there any formal commission or group or committee or anybody that can help assist? Because we know what the problems are, half of us could go out and identify the problems, it would probably be a good idea to get some of us to work with that engineer, so we can tell him what happens when it goes rain.
Here's what I can tell you, if we pay an engineering firm, we're paying the experts to make the, you know, figure it out. Now, that doesn't mean that I wouldn't be willing to have small meetings with the engineers who are going to get some input from you. I mean, we can certainly look at, but if we ended up, if we end up going with an engineering study to see what we can do to make the improvement, we're really gonna rely on that company for those experts.
I understand, but they don't know how far the water comes up into my crawl space.
Oh, no, no, I understood.
That's the point I think their buddy here is getting to.
But they can see the grades, they can see the water flow, they can measure, I mean, that's what they do for a living, so.
Sure, I do, I'm a gentleman.
Look, I'm not opposed to input, I mean, that's why I'm here tonight, I like the input, that's the way we make the improvements.
That's the reason I came up tonight, was, you know, if there's any way that we could get involved, I'm sure there's a lot of other people here that might get involved in a constructive way.
Only thing I'll tell you, okay, this is, be, be spirit of your ill will towards anybody, okay? We have a very active and passionate community.
Sure.
Okay? Sometimes the involvement with limited knowledge in a subject area creates bigger challenges down the road. Great example right now, and I'll give you the one I'm living through right now, is the permitting for the pools and all that. I'm not doing it. We, we've contracted with someone that is doing it, I'm just getting the updates on it.
I work with contractors every day, I know exactly what it goes through.
Yet, I'm the target right now of folks saying, well, you're not doing it, they're not paying me to do it. We hired a contracting company to do it. I'm tracking it and I'm reporting it on a regular basis.
And I don't think that any committee should have out or override an engineering firm, but just having the knowledge that we have that we see every day would probably be of help to the engineering firm. And your guys do come out and they may be documenting everything and all, but I think here in the first hand from the community itself would probably be a benefit.
Sure, and one of the things we're doing, a little, one of the things we're doing, thank you, a little different, when I mentioned document, you all know that we hired a facility engineer, right?
Yes.
You know that we did that, and this is one of the big, one of the main tasks I asked him to look at for us, every rainfall, bigger, small, get it, he's very, very good at graphing it and that type of thing. And again, if you don't track it, you don't have the history, you just have an opinion. We're getting it very specific, and every action we take, we're hoping to see the next rainfall a little more improvement. That's the way you see if what you're going to work, and you've gotta try something and document, try something and document.
We have a say in my business, sorry, we have a say in my business, and I do consulting work, that if it's not in writing, it never happens. You've gotta get the document.
And we're trying to document, yes, sir.
Yes, Bob. My name is George Maynard, I'm in Section 10, and I have a question. There was a lot of publicity a few years ago about financing the golf course, and one of them was the lifetime memberships.
Yes.
And I haven't heard anything about that lately. Where do we stand with them? I mean, we were supposed to sell like, what, 24, 25?
Yeah, we have eight, yeah, no, great question, I appreciate you asking.
And how many do we have?
We picked up two more.
And how many do we have?
We picked up two more in the last two weeks, so we're up to 18. I'm actually excited about it, because now that the project's done and the energy's coming back, we're getting a lot more people asking me about. You know, before, it was a huge leap of faith, and those who took that leap, I appreciated it so much. Now, we're trying to get to that next level and get the rest of it built, and we're getting a lot of calls about it. I mean, it's wonderful, now that we have a product and we're getting positive press, and that's what, folks, please understand something, and it goes right to this point, and it was a great question, if we're negative all the time, and we wanna pick something negative about everything we do, we can do that, okay? Anyone can do that. You know, my pies are cooking, my pies not, my shoes are shiny, they're not, whatever, you can find stuff to pick at. I choose not to. Now that we have a product and we're getting great press out of it, I believe we'll continue to pick up, we'll continue to pick up the lifetime membership. And that's why the two that we picked up recently, and we're so excited about the course, they jumped in. So I'm excited as where we are, we finally have something that I believe we can sell. But for those 12 or 14 that jumped in before we did, thank you so much.
Hey, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Bob, Heligus, 329 Piedmont Court.
Yes, sir.
I also represent 200 slip owners over at Pine's Point Marina.
Yes.
Question has to do with gas.
Yes.
Who made the decision to really tear out the tanks before they had permits in place? And you could have had gas in there now.
Well, the tanks aren't torn out, they're, everything's still there.
Why don't we sell gas until you can give your permits in place?
You know what?
I mean, you have owners that can go 10 miles to pick up gas.
Selling fuel is my highest priority, okay? I'll be able to light you a little more in the next two days, I promise you. I agree with you. If I'd known we'd have been here, I'd have filled the tanks and been pumping fuel and then shut down for two weeks, says, oh, I got a break while we do it. We would have done that. We had a second solution in place of doing a, bringing a temporary trailer and a tanker, basically, doing a connection with the breakdown and just keep that full through the transition period. There were some things that were occurring, or we thought were occurring, that were not, and that's what we're addressing right now. I'll be able to talk more definitively, like I said, by the board meeting, I'll be able to lay it all out, here's the timeline. I agree with you. Selling fuel is a high priority, trust me, the calls that we're getting daily, I don't want any more than getting the fuel on. Golf course is now behind, the fuel is next, and the pool is behind it, fuel and pool, that's all we talk about every day.
That is one of the few profitable amenities you have.
Yes, sir.
So every slip owner and their money, they'll offset the loss?
Absolutely.
And I'm trying to get calls too.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we would love to have.
Is it a case with the general contractor just didn't do his job? That's what it's beginning to look like.
I will, I will be able to update in the next two days. I'm not, I don't wanna talk to Adam Turner on this, there are a lot of things happening this week, I'll be able to update very definitively by Saturday.
Okay, 'cause I think it's just been a significant loss of money and an inconvenience for the slip owners.
Who's held accountable for the loss? It's coming to me at the end of the year, so, trust me, no one feels it more than I do. Hey, hey, right next.
Bruce McIntyre, one, Section 4, 168, Lot 168. Years ago, the yacht club was termed a international yacht club. We'll still have that same nomenclature, and if so, do the plans for the construction down there include retaining or replacing the pump out system for boats?
Ooh, two good questions. I didn't follow the first one as much, when you say internat, I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Well, I'm not that conversant in it either, except that.
Then the answer's no.
Well, I, there's a significance to it, sir, as to federally and state licensed vessels that needs to be looked into, and the availability of a pump out gives you an upgrade as to a yacht club.
Well, I, I can answer the second.
It may even draw you some business, people going north and south.
I like that one. We will have the pump out, okay, we're upgrading the pump out.
Very good, that's what I wanted to know.
With the pump house, there was a pressure.
Well, it's the pump out, I would call it that.
But it's, it's where the boat.
Clean out your macerator and the fishing boat.
Basically, you can hook your boat up and dump your waste out of your boat.
You'll pump it out in a second.
There's part of, if you recall, we're redoing the, the side of the building, you know, we have the bathrooms, then the pump house. The pump house is completely gone. We're putting a new pump house to include some shower and bathrooms for the Marina side. Included in the pump house part will be what you're referring to. The pumps set up a little differently, it's more, the new ones are far more efficient, much cleaner, and we will no longer need that second structure that's been behind the building that most of us don't see, that's removed. We won't need that. So there will be an upgrade.
Okay, so we chewed that up, okay. Another item, you've been talking about drainage ditches, and I had a similar incident in Section 4 underneath my driveway, which got both county and Ocean Pines' attention for a period of two days, and the word was, we'll be back to look at it, check it out. That was two years ago, and when we had the heavy rains, when we had the heavy rains in the earlier spring of the year.
Right.
I did have water almost up to my house because that wide driveway is plugged up. Now, you see.
The culverts back, or?
The pipes are plugged up evidently. I'm unable to get down on my hands and knees and do it myself.
Our guys can check it, if you tell me about it, we'll check them.
Well, I did tell you, but I did contact you.
Tell me now, I'll make sure.
I'm betting you know about the rapidity in response to my request.
Fair enough.
I feel like I'm talking to a barber for crying out loud.
And at that, I'm done with the meeting, I tell you now.
I just wanna recommend, I wanna make a recommendation, may I make a recommendation? When you start flat chopping the roofs. Maybe if it, because you wanna put a little crown on them so they drain to the sides of the street, right?
Right.
Okay, that would seem to me to be a good thing to synchronize with the ditch digging. Radio hole, do you have a radio hole that scoops but rotates?
Okay.
Do you have one of those?
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. That's about all I wanna do today. That's about all I wanna do today.
Thank you for your valuable input. Right back, and let me, hurry, hand himself up, come back this way, I promise.
Can we have a talk with you on that? Yeah, I have another question.
All right, fire away.
My name's Katie Anderson, I know about one sixty-two Sandy Hook in Section Three. Um, you've just given us a line-by-line flow of three topics that you're working on, three projects. Where does our project with our flooding come in? Are we like seven, eight, nine?
No, 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 we're at, at separate. It's, I, when I talk about the projects, we have three, three construction projects underway that are packed with contracts are underway. Um, they're, yours is separate, yours is a maintenance. It's on a different.
We would just like to be pushed up a little bit higher. I mean, we're really, I, I mean, I hate to be dead force, but you know, the water is ruining our neighborhood. It's very hard, even if we wanted to sell a house, to answer questions and say, "Has water been sitting in your yard for more than twenty-four hours?" Yes, it has been sitting in my yard sometimes for three and four days. And, you know, I don't think we could possibly sell some of the houses in our neighborhood because of this situation. It is ruining our neighborhood. We really, really need your help, people that are on the board. Please, 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 help us. Do something to help us.
And I was, right here, now come right here.
That should be bringing the water.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to correct proof. The yacht club is not an exercise for yacht club. It's not the unit of yacht club. It only has that name because Boise Cascade put the name Yacht Club on the building to sell lots. So it's not a yacht club.
Okay. Where's Bruce, can you hear that? Mr. Mack, is that? Oh, no, I know where he, he is, I was seeing him, so. Okay. Thanks for the input. We'll work this way. I go here, I'm here, sure, hand himself up first.
I live over on Seafair, at the corner of movie Dick Wayne and Chuck Caravanian. And I, I'm not gonna talk about the ditch problem. I have, it has to do with the boat ramp. I was all excited when I read about the boat ramp was going to have all the renovations done to it. So I waited, and now it's, I, I called up and I texted, and I got the message that, um, with their waiting for the county to approve the new ramp. Because the ramp, the old ramps, okay, drop off, they deteriorated. So I said, "Well, why don't you fix the old ramps, you know, so that they don't have that big drop-off at least, and wait for the county to come back?" And then I suggested, "Well, maybe it's time to reapply for these permits, you know? It's like the government, you keep asking, you turn a new form, and you keep turning in new form. Then you might get somebody else up there to say, 'You know, they're serious. They asked for a three-ten.' My only concern is, is they're not gonna do all the renovations, fix the existing ramps sufficiently so that we don't bounce and go in the water." That's it. Do you have any, uh, anything to add as far as the work schedule goes on that? If you do, I would like to hear it.
Happy to be there. Couple of things. All right, the, as for the White Horse Boat Ramp, okay, we looked at that. Uh, we came up with, uh, we, and we had help with the MAC Committee Chairman coming up with a new design for the ramp. We put that information out there. Uh, we had a prelim, had, had, uh, one of the bulkhead folks that do a lot of work for us give us some preliminary numbers on what that would cost to do that work. Uh, but we did not put, it's not a budget item to do this year. Now, with that being said, we're, we are, we are already working through the permit process, knowing that takes a while with the preliminary design we have, because we can modify those later, but because we're driving that, we've already started that process with MDE and, and we'll go through the state. So when, next year, it's the intent, when I start building the budget in September, you know, which will be hopefully approved by February for the bylaws, um, I'll include, and I said, that would be something we'd be including for next spring, summer, to have done. In the meantime, we talked with the county about putting gravel, something off the edge to prevent the, the drop that folks have talked about. Uh, the challenge is, you can't do that. We talked with two people to say, "Can we put construction run? Is there any material we can put to lessen that?" You can't. You have to go through MDE, you have an approval, you have to do the concrete work, you have to, you know, dike it, drain it, do the concrete work. So this year, there's no intent to do it. We've done patching, a blacktop and things we can on the, on the hard surface, but that drop-off will be there because we, we can't get approval to do it. We're gonna have to go through the process. If we're doing that, we're gonna try to get the full ramp redone. It is a significant drop-off. And here, and I'll jump back there. Yes, sir.
Hey, Bob, Dick Neiman, forty-five Wood Duck.
Yes.
Just so you know, my canal is flowing really well, except during Sandy. Then I get water in the yard, so you can't control that. Uh, one concern, yeah, and I'm not even a sanitary engineer. Um, one of the things I was gonna ask you, two things that concern me so much, I could hit them one real quick. I think I saw something about dredging the pond down there, I know on Beachum, the big pond in the back. If you, if the water won't flow out of here fast enough, that pond probably was.
Bang, bang bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So is that an expected proposition? In other words, uh, one of your predecessors said draining Ocean Mines is sort of like draining a pool table. It kind of lays there and then slowly goes off. That was what the last study said. I was just wondering whether that, you know, a lot of places have a pond where you collect all the water real quick and then go. And I'm sure that's probably filled in over the last forty-five years. That was my first concern, and I'll let you. I'll throw the other one at you real quick.
Okay.
We, uh, had our Heron Isle port just, you know, paved.
Yes.
Probably February, early March, somewhere around there. Within eight weeks, grass was growing through. Now, I'm sure it's Bermuda grass, I talked to Eddie Wells about it. He said, "Maybe you could spray it." I knew that if I were having that driveway installed and those guys came and laid down asphalt, and within eight weeks I had grass growing through, I'd have an issue with them.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
And I, Eddie, bless his heart, is probably gonna spray it, and they have already done so. But I'm questioning whether or not we've got the right contractor on the asphalt or they're only laying down three-quarters of an inch or what. I mean, it's unconceivable to me that in February, March timeframe, with the cold, cold as it was, that all of a sudden we have grass growing through the asphalt already.
Grass growing through it before they paved it?
Had the grass all over the damn thing before they paved it, okay? It was about three feet out.
Okay.
Okay. And it's only about a foot and a half out now.
Okay.
And it's less. But what just perplexes me, if I had have done my driveway, you know what? I said, "I wouldn't, I'd be after that contractor like anyone else." So anyhow, just addressing that concern and just whether or not we're getting the right job on the asphalt. You'll even have to answer that question. But what do you know about the pond? Do you dredge it?
Yeah, the pond, we did look at one of, one of, remember, it was eighteen, twenty months of meetings, regular meetings of Bang Bridge? Um, or about for the flooding, Bang Bridge Pond, one of the solution was to expand the pond. That and, and expand it towards the higher elevator, you know, just dig it out more. What ended up, that's, the pond isn't what was, but the final solution was, the pond can't hold enough water for this section to be a permanent fix. And we're losing parkland that could otherwise be used for a non-permanent solution. It didn't seem like the right, based on all the numbers. And the county engineer actually did the numbers because that was the first solution, was actually making it a bigger pond and a little bit deeper. The backup would still occur at a certain level. So you'd get some temporary relief, much like the Beachum Road solution that's there now. If you got a temporary solution, you do have better water flow, but it's not enough when you get a heavy rain, and that's what was determined. Um, I'll look at the asphalt situation. It's, uh, we actually have an engineer, our guys checked it, and we also have a third-party engineer that comes out and does sampling before we even cut the check for the payments to make sure what we're paying for is what we're getting. So I'll call, we can certainly call up on that.
Never run Heron Isles right on down, you just look at the quality.
Yeah.
And go down.
We do.
I, I don't think I need the mic, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. Paul Wolf, three seventy Ocean Parkway. Uh, one thing, uh, real quick on that pond note, if you had the pond and Beachum as a combination, two short-term fixes, but besides that, I did the survey you put out, and I was just wondering, is there a chance that the meetings will be held in addition to Comcast, the MediaCom? Could it also be on DirecTV, being that a lot of people are putting the dishes up and using DirecTV?
Can the MediaCom?
In other words, your meetings are broadcasted on the MediaCom channel. And those of us who do not have MediaCom.
Oh, 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 oh. We're going to.
You can stream it on your computer.
The computer is the only other way to do it, then?
Well, I, I think, well, I don't know definitively, we can look into it. I mean, I, I, DirecTV or.
DirecTV.
Look, I never say no. I'll look into it, I'm the optimistic one.
Do that after something's pretty.
I'm gonna help you up in this, um, camera, but, um, oh, you, yeah, but you couldn't have the palm trees in the pods and they gave you time to look into that for your.
You were at the meetings?
I'm not ready for that.
There was some interesting, yeah, interesting.
That, that helped you up one time too, because they wanted you to plant them in the ground as opposed to having them in the pots.
Yeah, we say, yeah, we say interesting. We.
Let me say something. Well, I'm sorry. Anyway, let me just say something quick. Over at the beach club, um, I noticed, we do metal detecting over there.
Okay.
Been on the beaches now.
Yeah.
Nails, rusty nails, when you go off the deck, nails. Uh, we don't metal detector because it, it's so much trash in there. Is there any way that you could sit that sandhill with rocks and nails on? Make it a little pleasurable? People playing volleyball there, and I'm surprised that they haven't had a spike root in their leg or wood.
It's first I've heard of it. I mean, we've had folks out there doing stuff all the time.
Oh, nobody's not heard that.
That's it, we're gonna have it.
I'm not saying that.
You're going to go with the, with your, right, your detector and check it for us?
We have. I don't go there anymore, because it wastes all my time. I, name, name, you just go crazy. They're not going, but I'm saying, there's a lot of rock, I just, a lot of rock mixed in with the sand and that. And that's, uh, loose stuff.
Jerry Attaberry, Section Ten.